Yep. I give up then?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor Allen Cadell?
Yes, sir.
Jeremy Simpson?
Yes.
Ricky Hager?
Yeah.
Casey Springer?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the town clerk salary and about a year and a half ago again, so somewhere around that time period, the council voted to furnish our full-time employees insurance. And it was gonna be through Alabama Municipal Insurance Company. And it was gonna be, I think, in the neighborhood of Spalwood or Long, I think it was. And we didn't realize, but that had never been fulfilled. So Tanya got her own insurance since then. So...
Got it.
Uh, yeah. So, we would like to compensate her. She makes ten fifty an hour to go to fourteen dollars because of that insurance we would have been providing. She's been provided herself. And she's here every day from nine to three, does a really good job, and...
Cuts grass, really?
Yeah, cuts grass really good when they, when they're there. So, uh, I think it would be a, a good offering on the town's part since you did not get the insurance to raise her salary to fourteen dollars. Any discussion?
How long have you been there? How long have you been there?
Two? Two years, two years. So, any discussion?
I think we need to go back. Can we do that?
So it's kinda creepy?
Is it?
Yeah. Madam Council, one of the only hesitation that I have in that is that they're typically, town employees are not generally able to take bonuses. And that would be considered a bonus. I like the way you put it as back pay, but you know, I'm always the first to say, I don't know.
Yeah.
So let me...
Well, say, my problem with it is that she was promised something eighteen months ago and didn't get pay raises in lieu of that.
Right, right.
So...
Uh, if you would, just give me, uh, until the next regular council meeting.
I want you to do that.
That's right, the, the right way to do that.
Okay. She don't have a lot. No, I'm sorry, well, aren't you?
Well...
I'll say no for you, Mr. Mayor.
He's checking into that part. Do we have a motion to raise her to fourteen? And he can check on the other, and that can be addressed at the next meeting.
Call roll.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Which one?
It got mothered.
Take your hand.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
A little roll call vote on that too, please.
Mayor Allen Cadell?
Yes.
Jeremy Simpson?
Yes.
Casey? Ricky?
Yes. Okay, number five, Teacher Appreciation Day is, is, you gotta respect it. It's May the fourth, and generally each year we have provided the teachers at school lunch on that day. Generally, we, Tanya gets souffle to make trays for them, and we provide chips and drinks. And it is May, it's May the fourth this year, and they would like to ask us if we would be willing to do it. This year, it's about fifty-five staff members. Any discussion on that?
What are we doing anything? You're doing it.
It'll have to be souffle, but in the past, that's what we've done because it was...
I think that's a lot needed.
You didn't have to keep it warm and...
It's better than meat.
Yeah.
Souffle.
And they said they were fine with that since we had to go get it. We don't have to keep it warm and it's, and it works, has generally worked out pretty good.
And I, and I might say just for the town certification and everything else, typically the mayor, or this is an expense that would be within the mayor's purview of expenses, but since it's not a regularly occurring expenses, it's why we need the towns, or the councils approval for this one.
And I'm one generally is going, anytime we're paying money, we're gonna break it down.
That's right.
You know, I'm just kinda, I like to be transparent with the town's money, so generally I'll, I'll break everything.
And leave, leave it by the trailer.
That'd sound good.
Yes, Mr. County.
Have a motion?
I'll be first.
Have a second? Do you want to roll call that?
I would, yes.
You would? Okay.
I'm starting running this.
Mayor Allen Cadell?
Yes.
Jeremy Simpson?
No.
Casey Springer? Ricky Hager?
Yes. Okay, item number six, the town of Waterloo each year has sponsored a scholarship to a student graduating at Waterloo. Each year it's been five hundred dollars. The student staff selects that person, and...
Did we not owe it last year? I don't think we owe.
Nah, I'm not worried about it.
I, I mean, I'm, I was thinking we did, I'm reading.
But I don't.
Five hundred dollars is not a town like a, a lot for us. God, no, we ain't filthy rich.
It's, it's been that amount as long as I can remember. It is ma- it may have been different in the past, I do not remember or do not know. Um...
Everyone else should know that, yeah.
Yeah. But awards day is May the ninth, so that's why I put it on Jennifer tonight 'cause our next regular meeting is May the ninth.
And they're gonna need one next.
Yeah, and they're gonna need it ahead of time, or need to know for sure they're gonna get it where they can make their selection. Any discussion on that? Are you comfortable with the five hundred?
I don't know, I don't know how much stuff I got to wind up. I mean, everything else is pretty rich right now.
Well, there's, there's, any, any college is, expense is great.
How much is a book? You know, play your spin it on books.
Well, it's not so much books anymore 'cause they do so much stuff online.
That's right.
So, so... But any amount we, we donate to them will be greatly appreciated.
Right. I'm good with it.
More questions? Have a motion?
Who's taking it?
And it's greatly appreciated. Whoever gets the scholarship each year, they, they generally always appreciate it. And it shows we're willing to participate in the community and student life activities.
About that too, we would need.
Right.
Mayor Allen Cadell?
Yes.
Jeremy Simpson?
Yes.
Casey Springer? Ricky Hager?
Yes. Okay, item number seven, statement of economic interest. If we're a council member or affiliated with the town, like a town clerk, in point of is, is on the council, we're required to fill out the Alabama Ethics Commission's state, a statement of economic interest. I have to do it at work, I've had to for as long as I've been there. So I'll give you all, each one of these needs to be in the mail by April the thirteenth. It won't take you very long to fill it out. Just general questions. They just wanna be sure that you're not, you know, personally, um, receiving revenue or anything from, or a company loan from the interest of the town. It's basically where it is. So I'll give you all, each one of these before you leave, and please fill them out because we have to turn in who has to fill them out each year. So if you don't fill one out, they'll generally contact you. Okay, as, as most of us know, number eight, uh, we have porta jocks that we purchased several years ago, and we've never been able to get somebody a license to clean them or much less to truck the inspected produce. So I talked to Benji Wilson at WPI. He is willing to work out a contract with us to use some of our porta toilets year in year in exchange for cleaning ours during our events, for the July and the Trail of Tears. I talked to Jim about it, he's gonna try to prepare a contract where we can have it for up to five years, and then he said if that five, end of that five-year period, he would be willing to purchase us, purchase them all from us if we wanted to sell them at that time. That way we won't have to, cause not too many volunteers wanna clean porta toilets, you know, let's just be honest.
You know, how many of you have been with that?
Well, like...
Forty-four.
How many?
I thought it was a forty-four.
We've got thirty-two standard ones.
And the rest of them?
And six handy. And four hand washing stations. I got in and counted them this weekend, so if, and I, I, you know, in the past, what they charged us to clean them is relatively expensive. So it might be in our best interest at least to look into it.
Let's forget something right there.
Yeah, and see if we can get that handled and not have to have our truck inspected, bring it up to code, and get somebody certified.
Is he gonna use the truck too?
No.
Okay.
He's got a new truck. But if we get somebody certified, we just, they'd just be doing it fourth of July and probably two weeks of Trail of Tears.
That grass mowing is new.
Yeah. So that way, if, and we cannot sell them for five years 'cause they were, got on the grant, we can't sell the truck, but we can take the pump off the truck and use it in for other, yeah, use it for a flatbed, use it for other needs that we might out for in town. Right now, we, we can't use it for anything. So trying to get some use out of it, and it, and we've got a dumpster trailer and a dumpster on it, and it will pull that dumpster, and then when we have the truck here, so then we take that bag of garbage, we just pull that dumpster, take to the dump and unload it. We'll have to, that'd be easiest way to get rid of all that. So Mr. Stanfield's gonna try to work us up an agreement with that and see if we can't get something like that on that. All right, number nine's town lighting, uh... One of the state things that I've got to get to talk about is, with my job at the electric department, is white way lighting and road lighting. Well, they, they, they've come out with some solar streetlights, and maybe there's some green power grants out there at the moment. Maybe we could get a price on these, and if TBA has no problem, maybe put them at the turnaround, at the flags, would they be lit at night? And maybe through the cemetery, to where if they some light in the cemeteries and they would be strictly solar, and if they work out good, maybe use them to come up Main Street with maybe decorative hanging baskets on with...
Christmas lights?
Yeah, Christmas lights, other functions to do like a beautification program. And at the same time, maybe seek to, seek some help to replace the sidewalks.
Yeah. Oh, I think that's a great idea. Even if we just had to buy a few at a time.
Yeah, but I, I don't know exactly how much they are.
That's what I think, nice.
Contact the guy and, to find out, but I, I, you know, I've looked at a couple of them, they look good and, and these, and areas that, it'd be great if we could have them all solar and not have... And then the power's off at night down here, unless you can kinda see your hand in front of your face, you know?
That don't ever happen down here.
It does everywhere, you know? Uh...
All the places in the world.
Number ten, the, I hadn't got all the prices back from the tree removal here, but we're probably gonna have to add, you notice, you go around the baseball field to the right, I think that last one, Lightning hit a big tree, and it's all the pieces out there. It's a big old tree, Ricky.
Yeah, that's taken all the way out into the water.
Yeah, it's huge tree, but Lightning hit it and appears to have any way... And then there's two or three, you know, there's a cedar out here that's in the water they need to get, and there's a big log out here in the back, see if somebody can just get all of it while they're here. So they gonna, he's gonna give us some price on, 'cause they're hu- that one out there, it's a huge tree. That's all I have. I do want to say I appreciate Tanya's help on the grass, 'cause it's been...
What about them big limbs that are hanging over right here behind the home plate? Those big limbs on the trees that are...
Yeah, well, the, the whole ball field needs trimming, that outfield too, but we better take a little bit of time to see how much it's gonna be again.
Oh, right, it's gonna...
Yeah, 'cause, you know, we got off summer, we can get that out of the ball field, 'cause they won't need it till, you know...
Right, oh.
That will be after Christmas.
Oh, well.
Baseball season, it started back February, but if they can do it in the summer when it's dry, it would be a whole lot better. Yeah, I think. That's all I have, anybody have a comment? Yeah. Anybody have anything you'd like to bring up? Oh, well, we bring up this, and you, you talked about this a while ago. When, uh, Tanya would cut grass every day, Dale Cook, he stopped by and he is Posey the Chief Cherokee Nation?
The original Cherokee.
Oh, the original Cherokee, that's what he said, original, that's right. See, well, he left a really nice book.
I used to have it.
And, uh, Charles Moore, if y'all know, if y'all know Charles Moore, he's been an investor in Lawrence for years.
You can buy this one.
Wells Fargo, downtown stuff. Uh, is that right?
Yes, that was.
Yeah, and, uh, he wrote this book with several people, so, uh... I'm gonna leave it in the town hall. Anybody like to come by and look at it? And then after a period of time, we'll...
Real good book.
Did he leave you one?
He did, yes, and I'm more happy in Land O' Lakes.
Yeah, and it's a, I've looked at some, it's a, it's a very good book, and he, he left, uh, he left his information here where hopefully we can, we get, I gave him the town's information, so we ask him for any suggestions for the Trail of Tears, and hopefully he's gonna, he's gonna be in touch. We'll try to be in touch with him.
That guy that wrote that book, and he got one of the largest arrowhead collections in the file. Mr. Moore.
Anybody got anything that'd like to bring up?
I got some.
Okay.
As far as, I keep debating on this, the annexation of different property in the city. We keep talking about this after the meeting, kinda casually.
Yeah.
We discussed it with the attorney, and I, I just need to know if there's any interest in it with the council and the mayor pursuing this, uh... I mean, I think there is an interest, uh, in the community. We need to find out, and if, and if we're interested in it, I mean, we could discuss it meeting after meeting after meeting.
What are you talking about annexing? I mean, I don't, but then, I mean, I mean, how, how far out?
Well, there's a map that shows, uh, the community on seventy-eight, uh, that is in the city limits.
Right.
And we need, we need to know if it is in the city limits. Let's honor it, if not, then let's see what it takes to get it.
Yeah, I, I personally, if anybody wants to be an, into the town, if we can go through the proper process and they wanna be, I, I don't think anybody would have given it.
After every, every tax dollar we can give, but then again, that goes another, another town.
The process, I'll put it that way.
As we stated last time, if you're contiguous to the city limits, all you have to do is request, and the town council can vote on the request for annexation to bring you into the city. Anything else has to do two different ways, both of them. Uh, the first one requires a legislative act, where the, you propose to the legislature that you want to take a particular area, and then you have to have a sponsoring, both representative as well as senator to agree to that, and then they bring it to the state. We do not have home rule in Alabama, so you've got to go through the entire legislature. The other way to do it is by having a referendum, where you have every, in the area that the town wants to annex, you create a petition, I believe, and I'm, pardon, don't hold me to this, but I believe if you have a, a representative sampling of some seventy-five percent of the residents, you can have a referendum to have that area voted into the town, whether everyone in it likes it or not. So, you know, I encourage anybody who is interested in wanting the town of Waterloo to grow to please ask those who are contiguous to the town already to request annexation on it. I think to more specifically address your question, we have competing maps as to what the actual town limits of Waterloo are. And that's going to take a minute, which I haven't spent yet, and I'll wait for direction from the council as well as the mayor to take some time to try to figure out what the current map is. I know I provided the town in our last election, is what the board of registrars consider, considers is our town limit map at the time. Now, we can propose a different map to them, or we can start these other processes that are in. But I think we've got to take a look at that last map that we had. As you know, there's always been some discussion about whether or not the, pardon me for getting the name of...
Park of the Trucking Park?
The, that's right, the trailer park, which historically, the owners of the park did not want to be in the town. And that is something that has not changed.
How does the water come in the face with that, you know?
Well, we have TBA easements, as you know, more than most people, that, that surrounds us around that... Again, you can annex it, but you can't take control of it because it has a TBA easement on it. And TBA will essentially say that's our land that they've got. And no one is actually living in the easement they come up to. Uh, your property lines will, will come up to the TBA easement, whatever the contour is. And I, it was the five oh five that's been increased to the five oh six.
TBA mine. Yeah, we know what that is. Ain't nobody living beyond that.
That's right, that's...
They were talking about crossing the bridge, I guess crossing the border, I don't know.
And, and keep in mind, another thing, we did talk about it, uh, the last time, is that when you annex over a county bridge...
That's what I was...
You, you have the problem of not taking just the right of way.
You own the bridge.
But then you own the bridge, and you take over the maintenance. I do not think the town wants the maintenance of that bridge at this time. You can enter into an agreement with the county commission that they continually maintain the bridge. And, uh, Mayor Cadell and I have talked, we hope that the county commission continues to entertain the idea of expanding and modernizing that bridge using some of the, uh, re, uh, COVID relief money for, you know, and also rebuild Alabama money to work on that bridge, but there's yet to be any real response from the county.
Does the city responsible for this bridge, ma'am?
No.
No.
So they're not responsible for this one either?
No.
So...
And strictly because we couldn't, strictly from the economical standpoint, 'cause bridges cost millions of dollars.
And also, the town does not have a street department. So any street improvements and repairs are done with, as we talked about last meeting, where you contract with the county, and they've always been reasonable in their cost of improvement to repair any, any problems we have.
The city is responsible for a certain amount of roadage now in the city.
That's right, but it, when we have the issues, the county road department has been gracious enough to repair them for us.
At a very cook rate, at a cook rate.
And they sent us a label.
That's what I'm getting, that's fine.
Yeah.
But what I'm talking about adding is, is less than a quarter of a mile.
Oh, it's not the, it's not the road.
The bridge, the bridge is included in it.
Yeah, the bridge is the, now, if the county commission will...
Say, will take responsibility for that bridge?
If they will keep responsibility to the bridge, and we annex on the other side of it...
I'd be all for it.
I'd think there's a problem.
And we...
I guess you had to go with it.
You, the ball rolling on that, somehow, we didn't see it.
Sure, we've had this discussion, but we ain't got word back from them that they're gonna take, keep the bridge.
I believe what you're saying, and I have researched all that, I have talked with the representative, and everybody, the, the board of registrars, the mapping people, everybody is pointing the finger right back to the mayor of the county.
What did, what did they say about the bridge? Did they say they would, they would take it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's obvious that you have to make that right.
Right.
But the bridge is...
That sounded great to me, man. More taxes, I don't think.
I'm, I'm for it. Well, I'm, not my job, I'm saying I'm for it.
If, if, if you researched it really hard, you could come up with a grant money, like the county looking for on this bridge, and include this one also, cause they're both...
Thirty-seven dollars.
Yes, the people of Paradise want to be annexed in too, or either.
I don't know.
Would you like to find out, so while we do it, maybe we can get everybody at one time?
I, I have a question about that.
Not taking the dogs. Well, that, that'd be, if you're gonna shoot for it, that would be a good idea.
Yes, you would enter into an agreement with them to still maintain.
You know, the Paradise has been a, that road's been a controversial, I mean, I, I'm opening up old wounds there for her 'cause I know you'd be through it at the same time, because, you know, as long as I can remember, they've always had it out. There's some kind of clause in there that the county didn't have to.
Has to be man thing.
Yeah. But that's about it.
Minimum, but minimum.
That's right.
I make your honor greater, boy, of course.
That's it.
Yeah.
You have to be able to traverse it, that's about it.
That's it.
But in the summertime, when it's real dry, it's just hard to get them down in heels if it is with ice on them. 'Cause it's just slick, you know, I mean, it's, it's tough. I'll go ahead and stop.
I, I think the first amount of visit will be to find out if that property is already in it. You know, go back in the history and find out why.
Right.
Maybe it actually shows that it being...
Somebody had that map for some reason.
So, so there, there's some history there somewhere.
Right.
So you may not know it, but you may be responsible for that bridge from now. Some people think that that might be like when we have police, police jurisdiction.
Yeah, there was police jurisdictions out there.
Where was that from?
With the map, the map shows town, city.
Yeah, I read it, I read it when you had it over there.
How's the place moving this recent?
And the other police jurisdiction, it went all the way up here, in front of the property.
But no, not with crazy, didn't go that far.
It went to swimming hole.
Yeah, this side of the swimming hole.
You know, to build into that.
And what they rode it with in the road.
And the Secretary of State is also supposed to keep that information, though, while it's in access, as far as... Because only if it's approved by the Secretary of State do town limits take that.
I'm, I'm, like you said, like you said, no, I don't want you to know that part. We might, like I said, we might be already caught.
Oh, did somebody go back and find out? To say how you considered my already doing that on the bridge, anybody? But that's kind of worse. I ain't really trying to get you to... That's all I ran up to that bridge.
I, I, I didn't...
If they did, then, I mean, they...
I know somebody who wouldn't have it.
Uh, if I, if I can ask that we keep the discussion low here, right, you know?
So anyway, we'll, we'll go through the abstract company and Secretary of State Alabama and see if they have some history of where it goes, if the town even did extend to that part.
That's, that's all I'm...
Yeah.
So if we can annex all day long, but if we don't notify the Secretary of State so they can adjust their, their rules, or what, what they consider the boundaries of the ruling on what that is, it, it will not matter. So that's, that's a good place to start.
Yeah. They're good? We'll try, see what we find out. Would you like to have a conversation or ask some people in Paradise to come to the next meeting?
Thank you.
And see if they have any... And see if they have any interest.
Okay.
There again, we need to check on that road too, same way, see if they.
What about my road?
They are maintaining, if you'd like to do Paradise.
That's right.
Same way.
I believe that Paradise used to be with, with the city limits at one time, um.
I think it used to go over, remember Mike Sampti?
Pumpkin, Pumpkin told me that she remembers back to that. Country stocks maybe?
Well, here, here, here's a, here's one thing, there, there's a lot of history we don't know.
Yeah.
You know, and.
I think that's the issue.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of things that transpired by word of mouth and stuff through the years that we just don't know.
I've learned more about the town of Waterloo in the last five years, history.
Was there no record kept in town hall?
Every little.
With that history?
Um, I'm afraid to say that, I don't know.
What, what was it?
Anything.
I'm sorry, I was having a tension.
But I know, I look back on one day, I, I'll look, because I, I used to know the guy's name. The regional line, it's, it's forced in Paradise was built back for a hunting camp for one person. And from there, it just, you know, as property opened up, it just built off of that. But, uh, so, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of history there that we just don't know. But we'll do our due diligence to try to find out. And then y'all, if y'all invite people to come to next meeting, maybe we'll have, I will, not, I won't guarantee we will, but we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Or profits you pull.
Products you pull, that's right.
You know, most of those lots over there, I was at the sale when they sold it, it was like three or four hundred dollars.
You should have bought a truckload of them, Ricky.
True.
Three or four hundred dollars.
The highest priced ones were right behind the cemetery, they sold for like twelve hundred, thousands of dollars.
I'd hate to tell you what sixty feet does for them.
Yeah. It, it sells by the foot.
Cause some people it does.
Yeah. Anybody else got anything?
Actually, I have one other thing I love. I gave you a quote earlier, um, Scott's Tenny, which you may want to discuss at a, a later date or something, but if, I don't know that the town has a handyman of sorts, but at the library, um, in our workroom, uh, the ballast I think is out in the overhead. My husband and I tried to change the lights out, light bulbs, that didn't work, so I think it's the ballast, if somebody could take a look at that.
Okay. Give us a little time in this town.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try to come up with something for you, okay?
Alright, sounds good.
Anything else, anybody? Appreciate y'all coming.
A journey.
Make a motion, anybody have a motion?
Make a motion.
By acclamation.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.